The floors.
Yeah, um, you know, are you gonna do that yourself or you gonna have somebody do it?
Um, I don't know. I'll do some of it. My wife's getting tired of waiting for me, so. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, July eighteenth Selectmen's meeting. Could you all please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, living, and justice for all.
Mike, you got a public comment?
Good evening. So I'm Mike Dempsey, speaking as Chair of the Groveland Conservation Commission. And the Commission and the Selectmen received this great letter. And I just want to briefly read a couple of excerpts from it. It relates to one of our employees. So the letter is from the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissions. And it says, Dear Board of Selectmen, I'm very pleased to inform you that Annie Schindler, associated with the Groveland Conservation Commission, successfully completed eight units of the Mass Association of Commissions' Fundamentals for Massachusetts Conservation Commissioners Training Program and has received a certificate of achievement for that accomplishment. The Fundamentals Program provides commissioners and others with basic knowledge and practical tools essential to carry out the many responsibilities of ministering the Wetlands Protection Act and open space planning. And so they say, we congratulate Annie for undertaking this training, as well as you, Board of Selectmen, and the Commission, for recognizing the value of training and commission work and supporting this important training for your Commission and employees. Sincerely, Dorothy McGinnity, the Executive Director of the MACC. So the Commission is very happy that Annie was able to accomplish this. And she actually did it in less than a year, which is kind of amazing. So we're very happy. And I think we've, we know, we've always made a good choice in hiring Annie Schindler.
Thank you. And our congratulations go out to Annie, the Planning Director. Any comments? Anybody? Go ahead.
Thank you for bringing that forward. I had not yet seen that. So I always appreciate knowing when one of our employees has made an achievement. And people in town should realize that Annie's new to us and she's learning by leaps and bounds. And she's filling two positions, Town Planner and Conservation Agent, correct? And she's been doing a great job, as far as I can tell, whatever thing I hear. She's doing a fantastic job for the town. So congratulations to her.
Okay. Anybody else? No. Approve the warrants. Jason, do you have those?
I do. I make a motion to approve bill warrant twenty-two fifty-four in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred, fifty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents, which breaks down to twenty-one thousand, five hundred, thirty dollars and eighty cents to the town, three thousand, nine hundred, sixty-six dollars and ninety cents, water and sewer, and thirty-three thousand, three hundred, sixty dollars and seventeen cents to grants and revolving accounts.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Payroll warrant.
I'll make a motion to approve payroll warrant twenty-three oh-three in the amount of two hundred, three thousand, fifty-nine dollars and five cents.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? None. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Bill warrant twenty-three oh-three.
I'll make a motion to approve bill warrant twenty-three oh-three in the amount of three hundred, one thousand, ninety-eight dollars and eighty-three cents, which breaks down to the town of one hundred, thirteen thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars and eleven cents. Water and sewer, nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and twelve cents. Payroll withholding, four hundred and ninety-six dollars. Light bills, one hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred eighty-one dollars and eighty-five cents. And grants and revolving accounts, sixty-three thousand, ninety-six dollars and seventy-five cents.
Motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Approval of the minutes, May ninth. Everybody has a copy of that or should have a copy of that.
I'll make a motion to approve May ninth, twenty-twenty-two, meeting minutes.
I'll second it and offer an amendment in the one, two, third, fourth paragraph, last sentence where it starts with Selectman Castrenellis. The third sentence, Castrenellis felt this set a bad, the word missing is precedent, P-R-E-C-I-D-N-T, it's definitely missing. And at the bottom of that same page, it's out of order, the motion to nominate Jason Naves as Vice Chairman. It should say nominate Selectman Naves as Vice Chair. Then Selectman Castrenellis stated, then Selectman Naves is honest, trustworthy, et cetera. That's fine. Then move down that sentence that says motion passed, three, zero, two. Watson and, would it be McDonald voted against it? That's what I'm guessing because Parento seconded it. The second name is missing and that sentence belongs at the end of that paragraph. So it's just a procedural change on the minutes, not a content change.
Okay. Let's, uh, let's table that until we get it corrected and then we'll bring it up at the next meeting. I think that would be the best way to do it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
In our work, Jason and I, in reviewing policies of other towns, there is an allowance on minutes when it's like a small change. Like this is not changing what anybody said. It's putting a word in that's missing and a name in that's missing and then moving that sentence, motion passed, to the end of the paragraph where it properly belongs. It's not materially changing anything in the minutes. And I don't feel it should be delayed.
I'm aware of that. I just think there was like three or four different changes. My opinion, if it was something, it was simple, I, uh, I'd like to see a, it held off till the next meeting until we get it corrected to make sure that we have it corrected. Daniel, you have something?
Yeah, it says motion passed three, zero, two. Does that mean three in favor and two abstained?
Two against.
Yeah, it should, it should be three, three, two.
Zero.
Okay, then the one above as well.
So.
Three, two, zero up above as well.
The same with, the same with the other, with the other two.
Unless we're sure of the facts, Kathy. You know, I mean, if, 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 if we're uncertain as to the facts, if we all agree on the facts, then we could make the change.
I agree on the facts. That makes sense to me that because up above, well, wait a minute.
Three, two, zero.
It says two.
No one abstained on that, my recollection.
There was no abstentions. So abstentions follow. So then it should be two, three, zero. So if we all agree on that order across the whole minutes, every vote there on that first page.
Okay. Jason, you made a motion to, you made a motion for approval?
I did.
Uh, there a second on that?
I seconded it.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, I'm assuming we're going to agree on the changes. So should I say?
With the changes.
So the change would be, under reorganization of the board, the motion failed, two, three, zero, in place of two, zero, three. And then two paragraphs below, motion for Chairman Watson passed, three, two, zero.
Well, you don't really need the zero, nobody abstain. Usually it's just.
Three to two then?
Favor.
Okay.
Or the opposed.
So two to three, three to two. I'm not, I'm not hung up on the missing word in the next paragraph. So if that's material to anybody, I don't care. We can leave it out. But at the bottom of this page, nominate Selectman Naves as Vice Chairman. It should say, my statement about why I nominated him, and then say, motion passed, three, two. Watson and McDonald voted against. That should be the proper ending to that.
Selectmen.
She didn't use, like, I know, I feel the same way, Dan.
She leaves that out, except when she's talking about other people.
Nope, she left it out up above. Me and Jason, we're also Castrenellis and Naves.
I feel so hurt.
Castrenellis and Naves voted against. We're the same bucket as you.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? None.
I'd like her to refer to me just as Daniel.
Danny?
Danny. I'm sorry.
Okay. Uh, no further discussion. All in favor? Two in favor, opposed? One, you in favor of oppose?
I'll oppose. I don't want to wait for my.
Two, two in favor, two opposed. Motion fails. Now I'll try to do a, a motion to table till we get it corrected. Uh, there a second on that motion to table? Motion to table in a second. All in favor of tabling? Three in favor, opposed, one opposed, one absent. It's tabled.
I'll make a motion to approve June sixth meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Opposed, four in favor, one absent. June twenty-first.
I'll make a motion to approve June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, meeting minutes.
I'll second that. I'm just looking for it.
Uh, motion and a second. Any discussion? None. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Actually, Dan, you were absent.
Yeah.
So you would have to abstain on that. So three in favor.
Yeah, I was absent. I forgot. I'm sorry.
One abstained.
It's okay. It looked good anyways.
It did. Appointments of the board. Appoint Cole Blake of Blake of one oh, one zero, zero, three Broadway Havel to the position of seasonal groundskeeper with the cemetery, effective June twenty-ninth, a position part-time at the rate of fifteen dollars an hour. And we have a, a letter from the Cemetery Superintendent asking for the appointment.
I'll make a motion to appoint Cole Baki of one thousand, three Broadway Havel, to the position of seasonal groundkeeper, effective June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, at a, for a part-time position at a pay rate of fifteen dollars an hour.
Motion and second. I'll second that. Uh, any discussion?
I'm going to recuse myself as my husband is on the Cemetery Commission.
Okay. So all in favor? Three in favor, one abstained, one absent. Appointment of Nicole Sargent to the Groveland Day Committee.
I'll make a motion to appoint Nicole Sargent to the Groveland Day Committee, effective July eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Nothing. Um, all in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Thank you. And we have votes of the board. Ratify the Groveland Fire and Police Signal Operators Association Local one thirty-three contract for two thousand two to two thousand twenty-three. And we have that paperwork in front of us and.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Sure.
The union approached me about a extension of their current contract for another year. The only change to the contract was a two percent increase as granted to the other employees and other unions in town. So that is the only change that you will see before you this evening.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to ratify the Groveland Fire and Police Signal Operators Agreement.
I'll second that, just with a small correction for the year twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-three, to strike out the extra zero. Um, right? Yeah, that's fine.
Are you talking about the next to last paragraph there?
Yeah, where it says now therefore? The town and union.
Twenty, yeah.
Yeah, it's just a typo.
Well, we're never going to get to twenty, two hundred and three.
Never know.
You never know.
Never know.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? None. All in favor?
Yeah, let's go.
Four in favor? One absent. Special event, Groveland Day five K road race, September eleventh, from eleven AM to two PM. Route location includes Main Street, Seven Star Road, Governor's Road, Garrison Street, King Street, and Elm Park. And we have the paperwork explaining that.
I'll make a motion to approve the special event permit for the Groveland Day five K on September eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, from eleven AM to two PM.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? What's that? You, you, you had a question? Oh, okay. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent. And now we have the, uh, special event permit, Groveland Day, September tenth, ten AM to four PM at the Pines Recreation Area. And we have the paperwork filled out on that. Looks to be in order. There a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve special event permit for Groveland Day on September tenth, twenty-twenty-two, between ten and four PM at the Pines Recreation Area.
I second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Moving right along. And we have one day liquor license for Lisa Chandler, Groveland Day. It's five K, September eleventh, twelve to two thirty, one eighty-three Main Street. And we have the paperwork on that.
I'll make a motion to approve a one day liquor license for Lisa Chandler for the Groveland Day five K event on September eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, from twelve PM to two thirty PM.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? None. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Anybody here going to run in that?
What?
Anybody here going to run in that? You are.
No, I'm not running in it.
I'm.
Not you.
Good for you. I'll cheer you on.
I'm not allowed anymore because I'd be a, I'd be a, she win for a win. So I, I have to sit. You're laughing about Mike.
He's embarrassed.
And the people behind you. Okay, one day liquor license for Matthew Bowler for an event at VZ Memorial Park on August thirteenth, from two to seven. And we have the paperwork for that.
I'll make a motion to approve a one day liquor license for Matthew Bowler at VZ Memorial Park on August thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, between two and seven.
I second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent. One day liquor license for Kelly Brunalt for an event at VZ Park on October eighth, from three to seven.
I'll make a motion to approve a one day liquor license for Kelly Brunalt at Memorial, VZ Memorial Park on October eighth, twenty-twenty-two, three PM to seven PM.
Second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Discussion and possible vote. Sewell Street update. Bill Daley is here. Bill, why don't you go up to the podium and just give us a fill-in quickly? And if anybody got any questions?
Bill Daley, Southern Hemlock Lane, regarding Sewell Street. So we're getting pretty close. We're out to actually budget numbers with general contractors. And coming up on obtaining a building permit soon. And now with the final elevations of the buildings, with the architect and the final elevations and drainage done, talked to Mike and Concom before with, with the drainage layout. It's, we're going to be over the fill that was estimated with the DEP originally. We've already sent them the new takeoffs and drawings and they wanted me to make sure you guys knew about it. So I sent that letter in and I'm here to answer any questions.
Anybody got any questions for Bill Daley?
What do you, what do you mean by you're over on the fill?
Well, we, I estimated about, I think it came out to about seven hundred and forty or thirty-five thousand ton. And we're about six hundred and ninety thousand ton now, but we still need to come up another three or four feet at the, the very top of everything. Plus some area in the turtle habitat, which hasn't been permitted just yet. And from Building One down to towards Salem Street. And with those takeoffs, mostly it's because the buildings, we were running with a ten-foot difference between the garage elevation and the first floor, because they're kind of like walkout buildings as they step up. It's actually twelve feet. So what happens there is, you know, we lost two, we gained two feet in height on Building One, which gains four feet in height on Building Two, and the same for Building Three. It's kind of a.
Steps up.
Domino effect. So that's, that's the majority of it up in the top area there. And I, I can send you guys a finished, finished plan, but it's, in the whole scheme of things, it's, it's unnoticed. It's just, there's, there's other factors too. There's, you know, denser material, wetter material plays with cubic yards to tons. You know, you could get up to a one point eight, one point nine ratio in some cases with the soil. So it's, it's not a perfect science. I thought it was pretty close, you know, originally. The other thing was we had the takeoff from a previous owner, the topography. And, you know, stuff could have been taken out of there before, so we, we might have had bad numbers to begin with. But in the whole scheme of things, I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty close for what we're doing. I think I was pretty close in the beginning, but with the elevated building and finished elevations of the parking lot, that's contributing, you know, I think ninety, ninety to a hundred thousand ton there along. So.
Well, site works, Don, basically.
Yeah, we're at footing grade right now. We need fill in the bottom half of the scale with half the, you know, that'll be at the very end. But we anticipate being done. I mean, it's very slow now. We're at the stage now where we can be very, very picky on, on what comes in. So, but we anticipate the, the filling stage to be done by next spring. But it'll continue through the foundation process, right? There's no, we're not going to fill it up and then dig it, dig foundations in it. We'll filter footing, pour foundations, and then fill the foundations. So that'll, that'll be a continuing thing. But all in all, I, I thought the project went, went real well. I mean, I don't think there were any, any major mishaps out on Salem Street or anything. There was a couple of truck issues on the highway, but, you know, out of my control. But for the most part, we haven't had any big breaches into the, the wetlands or anything. No, I thought it went very smooth. I mean, it's, it's hard to believe that there's seven hundred thousand tons of material brought in there, you know, during COVID.
So who was it? Was it DEP that wanted you to come before? So I mean, what's the?
Yeah, so there's a guy at DEP, John Fitzgerald. He said, you know, did you let the town know? I said, no, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't think.
What are their concerns? I mean, do we have any jurisdiction over it?
It would just be amended to the original, they call the Administrative Consent Order, but it'll all still be under that, under those rules, basically. The, the biggest thing is that the footprint isn't changed, right? That would change a lot of stuff if the footprint of the fill was changed.
So the grade changed two feet on those steps?
It's like four at the top, you know? And then there's some area in drainage where actually slopes went from like two to one to four to one. So it's actually better with the slope. So their biggest concern was that the, that it's still within the footprint, which we are, right? We're not expanding outside the footprint into other properties or whatever, you know, to fill.
The higher is better, isn't it?
You know.
But for drainage and aquifer and all that good stuff?
There's all plenty of height in there anyways, but it's just, it's just the way it worked out. We have to get the numbers just to get the drainage to, like the fire in down by the cell tower towards metal pond, that, you know, that parking lot had to come up just to get the drainage to the pond. You know, there's just, there were a lot of, a lot of variables, so.
So they, do they need feedback from us? I mean, or just no news is good news?
Um, I, I don't know, really. They just told me to.
I don't know. I don't know much about it.
I mean, I, yeah, I don't.
I don't see a problem.
I could send them the, the link to this video I've done in the past, you know, so. He's just, I think it's more of a CYA thing with him, you know?
Yeah.
You know, he just likes to have.
Good job. You're done, right?
Just about, just about. We're going to get going soon. Like, I'm hoping maybe this winter for foundations. I'd like to, you know, if not, definitely the spring.
All right.
So, good. Thank you.
Anybody else? Daniel?
That was done. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I do have a question for Rebecca. Is that something that the zoning boards of appeal has to sign off on or?
So in regards to the administrative consent order, that does not have to go through the zoning board of appeals. But any alterations to the plan as he's suggesting in terms of the elevations or the design will need to go before the zoning board of appeals. And I believe Mr. Daley plans to do so.
Awesome.
Yeah, we have a whole laundry list of, of items for them.
Kathy, anything?
Um, yes, actually I do. I remember having some correspondence with Mr. Fitzgerald when I was first on the board and looking at, we, there were a few issues with the fill. And, and some was sent back, fill.
Oh, yeah, it happens all the time.
Absolutely, yeah. And we asked for some things, but we weren't able to get our own person there to monitor the fill. We, that was, I believe, disallowed. The town wanted to have their own person there.
Oh, it's, it's expensive.
That was disallowed. Yes, I realize that. So I guess what I'd like to see is the letter from Mr. Fitzgerald that prompted this letter from you. I'd just like to have the documentation.
I'll get forward it to Rebecca.
Yeah, so if it wouldn't bother you, I'd like to see all that and, and not, not consent or not non-consent. This is not a yes or a no. I would just like to see the documentation and have an opportunity to review it to make sure that we're doing our due diligence.
Yeah.
On this. It's a really big project for the town and I know there's been a lot of concerns about it. So we're just.
Yeah.
Being careful.
I got you.
Okay, thank you.
I just got, Mike, you had something?
I'd like to know if you, if the soil brought in was ever tested for PFAS compounds or just address that, whatever you can say about it.
I don't know about the PFAS. I, I know it's in drinking water that they check for now. I don't know if they can check for that in soils as plastics, I believe. I don't think they check for plastics, but unless it's under an SVOC, that's kind of out of my, my expertise. I, I know they check for the metals. They check for the oils, petroleums. And then there's all the, the SVOCs and VOCs, but I don't know about PFAS. I don't, I don't know how to.
I don't recall seeing it in the list of things.
I don't think it's in soil. I think the PFAS can just be in the water, right? Because of the, the treatment to it, I, I believe. I'm not, I'm not sure, but it's.
Yeah. I, I don't, I'm not sure myself. I just.
I don't know.
Thank you. I just got a couple of questions. You said, you said the grade was four to one going in there?
So there was an area by a drainage off, if you went up, if you're going up all the way off to the left. Well, as you get up the hill, because we had a pond there originally. And that was, that was a steep slope. That was three to one, then two to one. And we went, I think that's probably four, if not five to one now.
What, what's the grade of the road going in?
Five percent, max.
Five, what's the town?
Ten.
Under what? What's the town, under what?
10.
Under 10? So, the town?
Yeah, I think it was 10 or 11, yeah.
Okay.
Maybe 12. I'm pretty sure it's 10.
And it seems like that's awful high.
10% max grade
Yeah.
Is what's suggested by the fire chief specifically for their trucks. But I believe the planning board in certain circumstances has allowed up to 12% max.
Oh, wow.
It's not that, that bad.
And, and I tell you, I beg to differ with you about Salem Street.
Really?
Well, there was, there was a day that I got a couple of calls about the rocks that come off of a truck. And I know you sent out the sweeper and I think the highway department had to go out and pick up some of the
Yeah, no.
Rocks. And, but if you go up Salem Street from, from Route 97, from the Chinese restaurant, that road is, in a lot of places, it's all broken up and from, from those heavy trucks.
Well, we gotta remember, right? There's a lot of trucks going to the Havel landfill and the Havel dump, the trash dump, right? That road was skim coated with an inch of, I don't know, some special seal or, it's the same as the other side. If not, the heading from the pit to the Chinese restaurant is in, if not worse shape than the side coming in. That would be the empty side, when the trucks are even empty. And, you know, the majority of the trucks, I mean, it's kind of 50/50. I understand what you're saying, but back to the truck that spilled it, that's, that was a tailgate that blew open. That had nothing to do with us, you know? I did everything I could to help out, to clean it up.
Well, if you, if you start at the, at the Chinese restaurant
Yeah.
At 97, and you drive the length of Salem Street to the Bradford line, from, up until you reach your project, the street's in tough shape. Beyond that, it's, it's in pretty decent shape, which leads me to believe that it was the heavy trucks that were going in there.
I disagree. I think the, the half inch or inch of that new type of top coat that you guys put on, that you, that seal coat did out of woman, has failed. It's failed. I mean, you can see it. I mean, it's just, it's paling up. And then after me, they didn't do that there. They just did in that stretch up by, what is that, not Murray, the next one, the newer sunset, from there up. I don't, I don't really see any difference in the road. I mean, it's just, I mean, not to mention, I've had nothing hauling for the past month or so, really, but there's still tons of truck traffic. I mean, Chastain gets more loads a day than I do. So, I mean, that's
Yeah.
That's, that's just commerce, in my, in my opinion. I get it though, but if it matters, I mean, when I'm done with the project, I'm gonna overlay everything out there as far, you know, down to Murray and then up the other way, I mean.
Well, you're going all the way to
I'll go to Murray. I'll go to Murray.
Going as far as Murray?
I'll go as far as Murray. I'll do all the sidewalks, I can't, you know?
And, okay. All right, thank you. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
He's asking, we will have to give him a letter, will, Mr., I'm sorry, he's busy. Mr. Daley? I'd like to just know, what is it? No, there's something. We did this before. I want, I want to look back through the file.
I believe that he's just looking to inform the board, not necessarily for any vote. I didn't receive any correspondence that would, that required.
Okay, so I'll wait, I'll wait.
He's not looking for any vote or anything?
We can approve or disapprove.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on, town administrators time. Rebecca, you ready?
Yep. I just have a couple of items. Just wanted to let the board know that the work continues at town hall for the HVAC and carpets, as you can see. The HVAC work should be completed by the end of the month and the carpets and office relocation should be completed by the end of August. BSS continues with the Microsoft Office 365 migration for our email. We have had a few hiccups specifically over in the public safety building, but hopefully those will be rectified and we will be back on track. Then I wanted to let the board know about a couple of projects. The dog park construction should be beginning shortly over at the Pines Recreation Area. Aquaterf was awarded the contract and they have started to mobilize and we should see some activity out there shortly. Then also to let you know that we are bidding the Route 97 sidewalk project. That's the second phase for Route 97 School Street. The first phase was from the Salem Center, no, Salem and School Street intersection down to around Garrison, I believe it is, no, or Diane Circle. And so, this will pick up from where that left off and go all the way down to Garrison. So, we hope to get a contractor on board and have that work completed by the end of the fiscal year. And that was funded through a Complete Streets grant. The final project is the sidewalk construction on Main Street. You should be seeing some contractors out there shortly, right at the, right in front of Hart and Stone, that retail location where there's the asphalt pavement, that's gonna be a concrete sidewalk. So, they just finished the one that was in front of the TD Bank and then there's still two ramps that need to be filled in, but the last component of that project is the sidewalk right in front of that retail location. So, there will be some construction happening around town.
You, you don't mean Garrison, you mean the Gardner?
Gardner, yes. Thank you for the correction.
I forgot what I was gonna say. Couldn't have been much. Okay, oh, oh, yeah, the other was, when's that going to start?
We're hoping that one will start shortly. We ran into an issue with Mass DOT, but we think we have figured that out and it should be starting up within the next few weeks, so the next two weeks.
And be done by winter?
This will definitely be done by winter.
That's a long stretch to finish by winter.
It would definitely have to be done by winter. That's the extent of the grant, so I would expect it to be done by the end of September, to be honest with you.
Any easements have to?
No easements. There will be, for the, which one? For the Route 97 or the Main Street one?
Route 97.
Route 97, we're bumping the sidewalk out closer inward because the right of way is so large, so that will eliminate some of the issues that we ran into with the initial phase where there was a lot of takings and a lot of easements that needed to be obtained. So, there's really only, I think, one temporary construction easement that the town will have to proceed with in order to get this project going. And the second one on Main Street, there's no easements, but there is some agreements that will need to be made with two of the property owners, the TD Bank owner and then the gentleman who owns the actual entire strip mall where that Hart and Stone location is, because Mass DOT wants to alter their layout to include those and such.
Okay. That's gonna include new sewer drainage pipes?
I don't believe the second phase, because I believe the sewer already in the roadway. I know they're relocating some of the utility poles, but I don't believe any additional utilities are being placed.
Are they gonna put them in the middle of the sidewalk like we have in Golden Square? You don't know.
I don't know.
That's, that's, that should be corrected, from Gardner Street to, to the bridge, that utility pole in the middle of the road. You can't get somebody with a wheelchair down there. And that's, doesn't meet the ADA requirements.
I would agree with you on that.
Yeah, but, okay. Anybody got anything? Dan?
You talking about the telephone pole in the middle of the road?
No, I'm talking about the ones on the sidewalk on Elm Park.
Isn't that one on Gardner or Garrison? What's the name of that street? Telephone pole in the middle of the road? The road they just paved.
King and, King and Governors.
There's two of them, and I believe they're currently being
Spring and school.
Made into islands so that it makes a little bit more sense.
There should be a sign on those. I don't know if I'm off topic here, but it should say keep right. Okay? Because some people will take the left, on the left side of the pole. I think we gotta go around the pole, but, you know.
We'll take it under advisement as we create the law.
It's not self-explanatory. It's ambiguous.
Okay. Is that all you got?
That's all I have.
Thank you. Selectmen's time. Kathy, do you have anything?
Yes, actually. Just wanted to say that I sadly said goodbye to Bob Guptill on this, over this past weekend. He passed away down the Carolinas, but he was someone that did a lot for our town. And even as I was talking to folks at the week, I learned more and more of what he did for our town. I mean, I knew he had done amazing work at the cemetery, he did work at the library, he was a scout leader. I know he did tons of work on the Historic Society, Open Space, I believe, as well. I don't even know what I'm leaving off, but wonderful, wonderful man. Very, very happy that I had the opportunity to get to work with him when he was in town and get to know him. And it was a pleasure to see his children, his grandchildren, and his older brother. Wonderful family. Big loss.
Jason, anything?
Yeah, I just wanna thank the HOE department for all the additional work they continue to do down at the Pines. They just got the picnic cables down in by the docks and it really looks nice and inviting.
Dan, anything?
I don't know if this is, should be under, you know, old business or selectman time, you can tell me, but we talked about the town audit, the examination. And I just, when the CPAs were here before us, we talked about adjusted cash, correcting that once and for all and making the necessary prior period adjustments. Can you follow up on that, Rebecca? I think he said do it. It wasn't an issue, but I just, it's been lingering for years. It was a problem last time I was on the board many years ago and it just kept dragging along.
Yes, so they, they still have the contract. It was one of those things where we didn't really necessarily initiate work, but it's just kind of been a flow. As you had mentioned, maybe it might be time for us to go out to bid. So, I did initiate that process in trying to assemble some of the documents for next year.
Okay.
So, we will be going out to bid for the, for next year's audit. However, they've begun this year's audit of last, our fiscal year '22.
But can they make the adjustment for this, you know, this fiscal year they're working on? I mean, they just
We can have a conversation with them to see if they can wrap that item up this year.
Yeah, I mean, he said he could do it. And there'd be a prior period adjustment, I think he agreed. But it's been problematic for the treasurer's office and, you know, it's always a point of, you know, a subject matter and, you know, cash is out, you know, over 100,000. So, needs to be adjusted once and for all and not just dragged forward for six, eight, 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you. The only thing I got is just to expand on Bob Guptill a little bit. Bob, Bob did a lot of behind-the-scenes work that a lot of people didn't know about. He never wanted to be looking for any credit. He just pitched in and he, he got the job done. And I'm sure, I'm sure he'd be a little embarrassed if I was talking about his, the things that he did. He was certainly not one for wanting any credit. And thank you. Moving on, older unfinished business. Board of Selectmen policies and procedures. And Kathy, you and Jason were working on this?
Yes, and you have a new copy of it in your packet. Are we gonna project it? Can we? What's going on with our IT today?
Rebecca, you putting that up on the screen?
Is that, okay. So, Jason and I met again prior to this meeting, because you had said at the last meeting you needed more time to consider your input on these policies. So, in our second meeting, we also looked ahead to what else would be done in the policies that the board currently has that are not being followed, that would need to be revised and added to this. And then I decided to put it into more of a booklet form to make it a little easier. So, if we wanted to start with the mission statement and look at that first, do you have some input or feedback on that? I guess it's mainly from you and Dan, because Jason and I drafted this. So, well, we kind of lifted it from other towns, but sort of drafted it.
You want to read it?
Oh, be glad to.
Well, well, so that the people out there can, can see they don't have the luxury of having this paperwork in front of them?
Right, that's what we're working on.
Can you get that up here, Rebecca?
She's trying.
I lost internet connection.
Well, I'll read the mission statement. That is on the page, page three. And it says, "The Board of Selectmen is the chief executive board in the town and as such, members of the board are expected to arrive at meetings prepared, having reviewed all meeting materials, to engage in civilized debate and discussion, and to endeavor at all times to act in the best interests of the town." This is kind of a common mission statement for a Board of Selectmen. I want to say Jason and I reviewed about five, six towns, maybe, and focused our attention on about two or three that seemed to be more, more similar to us in nature. Small town, Board of Selectmen run, town meeting run.
Okay.
Do you have any feedback on that?
What's that?
You or
Well, I was waiting for her to
Oh, okay.
Get it up on the board.
Okay.
Broke it.
We broke it.
Oh. We got it back. Let me show you what you get the hammer. Having trouble with that Jason?
It's Wi-Fi capability is all of a sudden just shut down. Has to have issues basically readjusting. Problem is it needs network administrative, whoever runs your IT set up basically an admin password. And without that, we can't fix the issue.
Oh, okay.
So she's grabbing USB or grabbing files up. So that way we can toss it here and reject it again.
All right, we'll give you a few minutes.
All depends, but yeah, it should be over two minutes.
All right, you're on the clock, two minutes.
You happen to have the file yourself?
What's that?
You happen to have the file-
This file?
Well, we have the-
In the packet it came through, yeah. So it's sent out, it's, hang on, so.
Sure, sure.
Get out of that. Yeah, I'm just going to close that out and get it. Internet, come on. Okay. Ready in case.
We got it up there. Thank you very much. Okay, Kathy, go ahead.
Okay, so our intention was to, to go through the sections and to, to gain any input or changes that you might want to, to implement. And then this, this kind of sets the tone. And then the board, as I said, Jason, I noticed the board has other policies that we're not following. They're kind of outdated, that should be kind of shortened up and made easier to follow. So the mission statement is just kind of a boilerplate for a Board of Selectmen. I'm glad to make changes to it if, if there's other words.
You read that one.
Okay. So then the second, well, the page four goes on to the purpose of the, of this document. Because in the past, just, just to reiterate, in the past, what's happened over the years is the boards get together, they vote a policy, somebody throws in a file draw, another board comes in, votes another policy, and they're all on different pieces of paper. And our town administrator was kind enough to go looking for us and to gather as many pieces of paper as she could find, but I'm not convinced that we have everything. So what this does is sets the purpose of this booklet, which is the Board of Selectmen recognizing the need to codify the traditional and accepted working relationships among members of the board, between the board and the town administrator, and between the board and other town boards, committees, and officials, and citizens, as well as the need to consolidate town policies and procedures have undertaken to create operating policies and procedures for the Board of Selectmen. Acceptance of the policies and procedures embodied herein shall supersede all previous policies and procedures accepted by past Boards of Selectmen. And the term MGLA shall refer to the Massachusetts General Laws as amended. So again, what the first sentence is saying is that this isn't changing how we work. It's not changing the fact that we follow Robert's Rules. It's just kind of putting it in plain sight. The basics of it, not the whole book of Robert's Rules, but the basics of how the board works. So that's the purpose of this document.
Okay, next.
So no input on that?
Well, why don't you go through them all and then we'll do, if anybody has any comments.
And then number three, of course, on page five, the maintenance of the policies and procedures. The town administrator shall be responsible for the maintenance of all policies and procedures, for updating the policy manual with new and amended policies and for ensuring that copies of the board's policies and procedures are distributed to newly elected board members. Copies of the policy manual shall also be available to the public at the town administrator's office, at the office of the town clerk, and shall be posted on the town's official website. And so the intention here is that once we create this sort of basic structure, if the town administrator wants to make changes at any time, I would think we'd be open to that because she's going to be in charge of keeping this organized over year to year to year. So like, for example, if any new policies get passed at the state level with respect to Zoom, we might need to change a policy in our manual that was in respect to Zoom and she would bring it to our attention. And then section four is just, again, policies and standards of conduct referring mainly to the board members, just kind of setting the tone for being on the Board of Selectmen. And again, these are not things that we invented. These are tried and true, they exist in other towns in various forms. Some, as Jason pointed out, are very long-winded and we tried to shorten this to make it simple and straightforward. So, conduct in the community, a board member shall realize that his or her basic function is to carry out mandated responsibilities, develop town policy related thereto with administration delegated to the town administrator. Number two, realize that he or she is one of a team and should abide by the board decisions once they are made. Number three, accept the office of the Board of Selectmen as a means of unselfish service, not benefit personally or politically from his or her board activities. And number four, abide by the ethics established by the state. And then down below, you see the notation for the date accepted and then any dates if you revise a policy. And part B, conduct with administrative officers of the town. A board member shall endeavor to establish sound, clearly defined policies that will direct and support the administration for the benefit of the people of the community. Two, recognize and support the administrative chain of command and refuse to act on complaints as an individual outside the administration. Three, give the town administrator appropriate responsibility for discharging his or her disposition and solution. And four, have access to town legal counsel with the approval of the chair or the town administrators. All other town official, uh-oh. I might have lost a piece of a sentence. Just a second here. I shall find it for you. Apologize for that. Too many drafts of this, hang on. Yet to be found. So this is under part B, right? All other, and I'll fix this, all other town official, board members, employees may access town legal counsel with the approval of the town administrator. That's missing from your document. So the part that's missing is, it starts with all other town officials, board members, and employees may access town legal counsel with approval of town administrator. And then on to part C, conduct with fellow board members. A board member shall recognize that action at official legal meetings is binding and that he or she alone cannot bind the board outside of such meetings. Two, make decisions only after all facts on the question have been presented and discussed. Three, uphold the intent of executive session and respect the privileged communications that exist in executive session. Four, treat with respect the rights of all members of the board despite difference of opinion. And that concludes part C. And part D, which is our final part before we would move on to the second half, which is the policies the board already has. Part D, conduct of board members at meetings. A board member shall not be allowed to speak more than once upon any one subject until every other board, every other member choosing to speak thereon shall have spoken and no member shall speak for more than five minutes without leave of the board. Two, not be interrupted while speaking, but by call to order for the correction of a mistake. Three, speak at board meetings in a professional manner and shall not make repetitious, slanderous, irrelevant remarks or engage in any other disorderly conduct which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of board meetings. Four, be subject to the ejection from the meeting at the discretion of the chair or a majority of the board for disrupting the meeting. Five, cease debate on being called to order until the point of order is decided unless the chair decides to allow the member to explain. And six, call any member to order by addressing the chair if the member who is speaking transgresses the rules of the board. And that completes the first section.
About five.
That would go into, basically, the policies like that direct our, when our agenda is set, when the packet goes out, public comment at our meetings. Because you do have a, a policy on that that's somewhat restrictive. Also would be included, you have a somewhat restrictive policy on board members that go to another meeting that we're not following. There's also a remote participation policy that we would review for, for the next section and make sure that it's in compliance with what we're supposed to be doing. So we were given one, two, three, four, five, six? Seven, seven policies that the board has voted, prior boards have voted, that have just kind of fallen by the wayside. So we would attempt to kind of consolidate these and they would kind of surround how, how meetings come to happen, how public comment comes to happen, approval and posting of minutes, all of that. For example, one thing that Jason noted with the minutes is that rather than distributing them in the packet and asking members to read them and be ready to vote them that Monday, they could be distributed in correspondence and be voted, so that way the member would have two more weeks to review and then approve the minutes. Which is a practice that other boards do follow.
Okay, that's actually our current policy.
Oh, is that? Even though we don't do it sometimes? Okay, there we go. So the, the whole point would be to have one, one document instead of this pile of documents. And to surround it with a framework that, that kind of defines what a Board of Selectmen is while respecting everybody's rights within the board, certainly to comment on anything. I don't feel these are changes yet until we get to the policies that are already in place. These are basically Robert's Rules and a little bit of common sense put into writing.
Anybody else? Jason?
Oh, I worked on them. I think it's right in line with what should be done. And so, yeah. We were, we were looking for you and Dan for any input or changes that you guys wanted to make.
Dan, do you have anything?
No, I don't like change. Okay, and I think we've, second time I've been on the board and pretty much it's agreed. The chairman runs the meetings and sets the agenda and, you know, should be and I think has been open to input and agenda items and discussions. Some things require more than five minutes' time. So I'm not big on rigidity, I like flexibility. So, you know, I don't like change. I like it the way it is. Thanks.
Yeah, I, I have some problem. We, we have several policies and procedures. And to me, something additional just, just pollutes town government with more personal policies that we already have policies that cover it. And reading over this, I, I, I look at this as, as an attempt to shred the First Amendment, stifle debate, and silence opponents. The Board of Selectmen have to follow Robert's Rules of Order. They have to follow state ethics laws, mass general laws, along with others. And I, I don't see we, why we need another set of rules. We're, we're already covered by documents that we have. And perhaps, perhaps it could be explained, pointed out why our present regulations are, haven't been followed are deficient. And it, it, it just troubled me that we're looking at another set of policies and when we already have everything, and I didn't even mention the fact that we have, we're all given a booklet on guide to members of boards and, and committees. And I, I think we got, I think we're pretty well covered now and I don't see the need to have more rules and regulations. And how in the world do you conduct, where is it here? Oh, the, conduct in the committee, in the community. A board member shall, and then it, realize that his or the basic function is to carry out mandated responsibility. How do you, how do you tell the members of the Board of Selectmen how they act and do, deal with them, with people within the community? And I, I just, I just don't think we need additional bureaucracy and regulations. We have enough. Maybe, maybe the two that worked on it could point out where our present regulations are deficient and, or haven't been followed.
I don't think this is different from our current regulations or different from Robert's Rules, since most of it was taken from there and used by the towns. This is, serves as a guide for any new members, existing members, to all the Robert's Rules and that very thick book that you referred to, the Selectmen's Guide. Because it is a very thick book. It's to pull out the key, key points in those books and put them in a very simplified version. So it's nothing additional, doesn't change anything. It doesn't change the power of the chair or how the chair runs the meeting. And that's the purpose of putting this together. It's just to simplify it for somebody new that's coming on, to get a quick grasp of what and how and also to make that publicly known to the public. Because it's very simple, they don't have to read three different books that you mentioned. But that's, that's the purpose and, and the point of it and what you find there. And as far as how you conduct yourselves with the citizens, I think what's mentioned there is basically, as a Selectman, you don't have the ability to act upon yourself without consent to the board, which is, I think is well-known in terms of taking on complaints or instructing employees on things to do. Because that's all got to go through the town administrator. And so it just simplifies it. It doesn't change anything, it's not an addition to. It's a little handbook guide.
Okay, anything else?
Yes.
Go ahead.
If I could speak, I guess, I feel that to some degree, there's a view on this as trying to change what's been happening. And what's been happening tonight is fine. We've been, we've been following the book pretty well. It's a good, good, good deal. But I think, I mean, we all have to admit, there's been times when that, this is, the process and the meeting has not worked so well. And we've not been able to have civil disagreement, which we should be able to have. And, and this also explains to the public what we're trying to do when we say, okay, you can have this many minutes of public comment and this and that. For the public to try to read the Selectmen's handbook and then Robert's Rules and then try to figure it all out, that's, that's asking a lot. I think this makes us very transparent and it also puts us kind of in line with the new formation of government that we've adopted, the Town Administrator Form. It gives the town administrator procedures and policies that we're following right now. And then it gives us the ability, as I said prior to this, that you have a pile here that, some of them we're not even following. I'm just going to be very honest with you. They've been voted by other boards and because they're voted as singular documents to address whatever the problem of the moment was, they just kind of got tossed aside. We have a policy on boards and committees invitation to meet with Selectmen. We've never done that. We've never done that, all the years I've been on right now. I don't know if we want to. It might just be more stuff. We've got plenty to do. But it just seems that to codify it, much like you've done with zoning rules and this and that, it's not an attempt to be critical. It's an attempt to be transparent and to give us the opportunity to improve on how the board is doing and to do even better. So, in all honesty, I wanted some kind of input that would move this forward. I was hopeful that we would be able to move this forward to the next phase and get the existing policies into it, so that we would have just one document instead of so many different documents.
Okay. Anybody else?
I mean, it's like you said, I mean, we're, we're regulated. It's not, you know, the Wild West here. We have rules, state ethics, statutes, Constitution. We're also one to uphold the Constitution, First Amendment. So, you know, something in there about, you know, what was in there before, you know, can't be political. And I voiced my opinion on that, that most of what we do is political. We have opinions, everyone has opinions. So, what's not in the procedural manual, there should be it, right? If, if we have one, is people should listen more, even if they disagree with somebody 100%, but here, there, and everywhere, we just, you know, we don't listen enough. We're intolerant people in America of, you know, diversity of thought. They're threatening to people. So, to me, that's more of a threat than any than procedural. So, I just, I keep my eye on that ball and, you know, try to, try to, try to keep things civil. But every now and then, we get heated debate, you know, and it's okay. It's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Well...
So, you're going to finish this?
If you would like. I mean, I just, I heard Selectman McDonald's thing about the importance of listening and I agree. I think if it's not in there in some form, the word "listening" should be in there. It's an important part of leadership, being able to listen. So, Selectman McDonald would like to go through it and shoot an email over about a section or more than one section. I'd be more than open to putting that in. I want this board to kind of own this. I don't want this to be just me or Jason. I want this to be owned by the board. So, there's a pile of other things that need to be included in it, and I welcome anybody to take a shot at it.
Go ahead.
In spirit, we can all do better, okay? But I don't think we need a, another, to me, it's red tape. And, and, you know, I practice law and I'm this, you know, accounting and it's just rules on top of rules, you know? Continual education. It's just tedious. And then, and then you get into the real world, right? Like, we have a town meeting and we're supposed to have 100 people for a quorum, and then a few leave, and then we don't. And we kind of let it be. So, you know, I'm not saying rules are meant to be broken, but the more rigid they are, they tend to become brittle and they crack. And then we're non-compliant. And then what? We just ignore things and we know we ignore things. So, I don't want to, you know, limit debate to five minutes. I think we know when we have a serious issue. We know because there'll be a room full of people instead of the regulars, right? And we know what we need to put two hours into or two days or two weeks. So, I appreciate your effort, Kathy and Jason, but I don't want to move forward with the, it's, it's just cumbersome to me.
If I could, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I just need to correct your information, Selectman McDonald. The five to 10 minutes is not the extent of debate on an issue. It's the extent of time that a singular member can take the floor unless the board says, you know, please keep going. And that's straight out of Robert's Rules. It's right in the book. Because do the math. We have a five-member board, and five to 10 minutes each, that's 50 minutes on one topic on the agenda. So, I agree with you. There'll be topics where we'll say, let's just keep going. And I'd like to say that we'll all do that. But, and I hold myself as accountable to this policy as, as everybody else should be, trying to maintain ourselves to only five, five to 10 minutes on the floor, I think is a good endeavor as a member of the board, because it allows other members of the board the opportunity to speak as well, and we don't get too late. So, it's not meant to be restrictive. It is Robert's Rules. It's what we've been following already. The thing that would be different would be the next section, which is the policies that you were on the board for some of these, Dan, that were voted that the board's not following. And the question is, do we really need all these or not? And that would be what we would bring forward next, our recommendations about what other towns are or are not doing in that regard. And this would set a tone, so that as the board changes and new members come on, rather than having singular policies or procedures get voted every time someone sees something they don't like, there's a, a short booklet that we try to stick to, and we try to keep it short. Short and simple, straightforward.
Back to you, Dan.
I'm not in favor of rigidity, the five-minute rule. I mean, the chairman can control that. If you're being repetitive or argumentative with someone out there, you know, on the other side of the table, the chairman has discretion to control the meetings. So, that's worked. I think we continue down that road. If, if there's something that needs to be said in six minutes, I don't want to be cut off at five. So, I don't think that happens too often. I've been cut off in less than two. Got thrown out of a meeting for like a minute and 47 seconds. But anyways, I was too loud. But anyways, so, you know, I understand your concerns, but, you know, I'm going to vote against it. I just, I don't want it.
Can I try one more time? Unless he's, are you set in your way, Mr. Selectman McDonald? You willing to hear another's point?
I just want one mission statement, that we're going to, you know, listen to each other and try to get along as much as we can, try to be civil, try to do the people's work, and not personalize anything. And if we don't agree, discuss it, end it, vote it, and move on, next play. And, you know, I try to do that, you know, more so than last time on the board, you know? Just, you know, can't win every battle, can't win every game. Just try to do what you can. But I don't, I don't want to be, you know, and again, you know, you're not the only one that does it. I watch other meetings, you know, school committee and other meetings, and there's always somebody, you know, point of order interrupting. It just, you know, sometimes they're valid, sometimes they're invalid. But that sort of thing irritates me. I'd rather just, you know what? I'm not a scholar, and I don't need, you know, anyone interrupting me saying, oh, well, he said that and he shouldn't have said that. And well, then you do the job, you know? I don't see too many volunteers, you know? So, it's easy to be a critic. So, take the good with the bad. People need to be a little bit more understanding, you know? And, you know, not everybody's perfect and you can't always articulate everything. So, I just, I don't like the jumpiness and, you know, and the rules. It's like, oh, well, he said that, he can't say that, you know? Put order, Mr. Chairman. I hate that stuff with a passion. It's like, so what? You know? And, you know, that's all. I don't want rules for rules. And I don't care about, you know, I don't even know who Robert is. I mean, I don't even know Robert. Anybody know Robert? I never learned Robert's Rules of Rule or anything. I don't care. I mean, we have a society, we have our culture, there's norms in our society, and we try to fit into those norms and follow certain protocols. And I think we've done a good job at it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, my feeling is, we've got enough rules and regulations and policies and procedures. As I said, we have to follow Robert's Rules of Order, we have to follow state ethics laws, and that's why, like in page six, number four, A, number four, abide by ethics established by the state. We already have to do that. Why does it have, why does it have to be here? We also have to abide by the Mass. general laws. We have to abide by other laws, rules and regulations. And I just, I just think we have enough and we don't need to, as I said, pollute town government with more personal policies. And I think we have enough as it is. I heard the rebuttal as far as some of the reasons, may disagree with some of them, but I, I, I think we have enough. That's all I, that's all I have to say. Anybody else?
Yes.
Go ahead.
We certainly have enough, but the problem is that you can't just make up new rules when the rules, when you don't want to follow them. So, point of order is the only way you could interrupt somebody on the floor. You cannot just interject. You cannot just say, hey, wait a minute, that's, you can't use that word. You have to use the words "point of order" because that's Robert's Rules. Five to 10 minutes is Robert's Rules. This is not rigid. This is what you sign up for when you run for the Board of Selectmen. And if you can't do it or you won't do it, I don't know why you would run for this board, because this board is complex. It's complicated. And yeah, there's a lot of books that tell us what to do. And this is just an attempt to make it a simpler system for us to all agree on and see. And we haven't invented any new rules. This is Robert's Rules say five to 10 minutes. Robert's Rules say let everybody else speak before you speak a second time. Robert's Rules say if you want the floor and someone else has it, you need to ask the chairman, "Point of order, Mr. Chairman, please." That's how you do it. That's the way it's supposed to be done. And that is what keeps it civil, because these are parliamentary procedures that have worked for years in our country. And this is what makes it beautiful and makes it, gives it some dignity and, and makes the meetings, you know, more enjoyable for people to attend or watch. I mean, this, the board is five members now, and we deal with complex topics and we may not always agree. And it is in the best interests of everybody, the townspeople, ourselves, the town administrator, to please move forward on this and codify it. If you don't like some of the words, I've waited like three meetings now, please tell me some words you don't want in there, and we can change them, because it's not, that shouldn't hold it up. These are the rules we're already following. And then we have a lot of policies that we're not following. I would think the board would be concerned about that.
Well, just to, just to correct a statement that you made, as far as a point of order to, if I, if I understood you correct, it was, you call, you suggested you call a point of order to get the floor. And that's not the poss, that's not the purpose of the point of order. And if you read Robert's Rules of Order, point of order, if an order is, is being violated, then an, or an agenda item skipped, adoption of a motion with a majority vote with two-thirds is required, adopt a motion to spend in violation of the budget, except then you can interrupt. It would call a point of order. But it is not to take the floor away from somebody that has the floor right now.
Excuse me, you misunderstand me, Mr. Chairman. My point, my point was that Selectman McDonald said he didn't like the term "point of order." So, if you're at a meeting and you feel that either information has been misspoken, or the agenda's not being followed, or excessive amount of time is being spent, you have to ask the chairman for a point of order. And the chairman asks, "What's your point of order?" And you say, "I feel that we, this person's been speaking for 20 minutes," or "I feel that this has been misrepresented to the public." That's point of order. I think you might be referring more to town meeting times and votes on budgets. But within a meeting, you can do a point of information or more commonly, a point of order, which shouldn't have to happen very often if we're doing a good job. But here and there, that's the way you ask the chairman to address what you think is not an appropriate amount of time or amount, whether you're not on the agenda item as, as directed. Or, or if you're repeating. You don't say you're repeating. You have to say, "I have a point of order." And then the person's supposed to stop talking and wait to see what is your point of order. It's just civility. That's all.
You have something, Dan?
Yeah. I mean, the chairman can referee that, and that's the point of the chairman, not everybody to chime in. You know, it's a point of interruption, and it's the most abused point of order, the point of order. So, I just, it irritates me, and it's not what I signed up. I signed up to save taxpayers money and scrutinize the budget in a liberal state of Massachusetts, which is like shoveling against the tide, okay? That's why I'm here. All this other stuff is cutting the food up on the plate, moving it around and not eating it. I practiced law too, and I got a lot of problems with procedural things that just delay processes in our court system for three years. But that's off-topic. So, do I like procedure? A lot of procedure irritates me, because I wonder if it misses the picture, the big picture. It's like, what are we doing here? Are we just spending all our time arguing about procedure? Are we going to talk about some substance and get some things done? So, I don't want any more red tape. So, Mr. Chair, move the question, please.
Move the question. We, do we want to, wait, do we have a full board before we decide whether we should proceed with this? Because it looks like it's...
Be a good idea.
Hmm?
I think that would be a good idea.
Looks like it's not going anywhere.
Not going anywhere.
Mark's the swing vote. We can wait for Mark.
All right. Is there a motion to table? Motion to table?
A motion to table if I might.
Motion to table. I'll second that. A motion to table. All in favor, motion to table. Three in favor, opposed. Three in favor, one opposed, one absent. Next, order of business. Update on the manor apartment building. It was, we received a correspondence from the building inspector and Rebecca, you want to, do you want me to read that or you want to read it? Do you have it?
Yes. The letter to the management company, is that?
Sure, sure. Do you want me to read it or do you want to read it?
Whatever you would like.
I don't really care. I'll read it.
Okay.
This was dated July 7th to the management company on Manor Drive Apartments. Dear Arrow Point Union Grove LLC, due to the recent fire at the Manor Drive Apartment in Groveland, the Groveland Fire Chief and I, which is the building inspector, decided that although the buildings were constructed according to the building code at the time of construction, the second-floor units will need to be provided with a, with a second means of egress, as we believe there is, there was a need to apply the following sections of the building code and the National Fire Protection Association 1, NFPA 1. Persistent to Section 101.4.2 of the International Existing Building Code, the legal occupancy of any building existing on the date of adoption of this code shall be permitted to continue without change. This section goes on to state that the official code for the general safety and welfare of the occupants and the public may require specific changes to be made. In this case, the specific requirement is to the addition of a second means of egress to each second-floor unit. NFPA Section 1, Sections 1.3.2.4.3 also gives the authority, having jurisdiction, in this case, the Groveland Fire Chief, to apply retroactively any portion of the current reference standard deemed appropriate. Failure to comply will be enforced in accordance with the applicable provisions of Mass. general laws, Chapter 143, Section 6 through 12, and Section 94. Mass. general laws, Chapter 148, and Mass. general laws, Chapter 148A. Persistent to Section R112 of 780 Code of Massachusetts Regulations. You may appeal this order to the Building Code Appeals Board in accordance with Mass. general laws, Chapter 143, Section 100. Should you have any questions, my office hours are Tuesdays and Thursdays, 8 to 12, or my phone number, and he has it listed here, respectively, Sam Jocelyn, Groveland Building Inspector, Carbon Copy, Groveland Fire Chief. Sam Jawsland, Groveland Building Inspector, Kevin Carpe, Groveland Fire Chief. Now, that was sent out to the management company on July 7th. So they probably, with the mail the way it is, they probably haven't got it yet. So any comments on that? I know Kathy, you were requesting something be done. Are you satisfied with the, the letter that went to the management company?
Yes, I'm more than, I'm more than satisfied. I know that our building inspector has been working on this since, I think, 2015, sending them recommendations for this type of egress. And the serious nature of this fire, one life lost and two, potentially at high risk, just barely got out. So hopefully, we'll make this company pause and think that their residents deserve to have safety on the second floor of those units. It's nice in there. It's very pretty in there. But it should be safe. It should be safe. And it's Groveland and we take care of our own. So we're a community. And I know that people are reaching out to the residents. So I encourage them to continue to do so. I know my church has set up for some help to the people moving things out of their apartments. And I'm really glad that our officials are stepping in and trying to do what they can for these residents as well.
Anybody else? Jason, you all set?
All set.
Dan, you all set? Okay. All right. Moving on. Other items not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting. We have a letter from the town clerk and warrant for the state primary. And somebody want to read that? Do you have that, Jason?
I do. To the Honorable Board of the Selectmen, Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2022, known as the Vote Act of 2022, was signed into law among some of the permit changes follows. Voter registration deadlines. The voter registration deadline for all elections and town meetings will be 10 calendar days before the date of the meeting or the election. September 6, 2022. The primary election deadline is August 27, 2022, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. November 8, 2022. State election deadline is November 1, 2022, to 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Police officer assignments effective immediately. Law regarding assignments of police officers at polling places is amended to require the Board of Selectmen, Town Council, or City Council to assign police officers and constables to polling places. In-person early voting. For weekdays, the requirement minimum early voting hours will vary depending on the size of your community, at what point it is during the in-person early voting period. By default, the early voting hours are during your regular business hours. However, your City Council or Board of Selectmen or Town Council may have the option to limit early voting hours on certain days if your community is small enough. In order to limit your early voting hours, your Board of Selectmen, City Council, or Town Council will need a vote to do so at a public meeting held no later than 20 days before early voting begins. And then they have attached a schedule.
Okay, and we have the warrant. Rebecca, we should vote this, the warrant for the state election.
So I'd like to and would recommend that the board vote at their August 1 meeting. And we can make this an official agenda item. But to give a preliminary approval of the calendar and warrant as drafted, I think will help the town clerk move this initiative forward and still get it posted as required.
Okay, so we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting. And anybody have any problem with that? No. Okay. We'll put it on the agenda. You have something?
There's preliminary approval as to the warrant and the dates, of course.
You want to vote on that?
Well, just a preliminary approval that you don't have any, you don't foresee any issues with what's been drafted and what's proposed.
No. I definitely don't have any problems with what's been drafted or been proposed. But I don't. I think it looks good.
Do we need to take a vote on that? No?
Just if there's any comments, just to note them.
All right. Correspondence. We have the paperwork from the Woody Votek on the 2003 budget and a breakdown of when the payments are due. Okay. Oh, and we have, we just got this before the meeting. The Groveland and Havel Council on Aging, End of the Summer Elvis and Ice Cream Bash, sponsored by the Friends of the Council on Aging and United Healthcare. And this is going to be on the Town Hall lawn on Tuesday, August 23rd, 12:30 to 3:00 p.m. Bring your own chair or blanket. Tickets are free and available in the Council on Aging office. Ice cream trucks free. Sign up required, 12:30 to 1:00, under the tent. And thank you for that. And adjournment. Next regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen will be Monday, August 1, 2022, at 6:30. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:05.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? None. All in favor of adjournment? Four in favor, one absent. Thank you. Mike, thanks for reading that, Council on Aging.